Commissioner, the City of Lancaster, please come to order. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Vice Chair Hall, and the pleasure will be led by Commissioner Torriciano. Please stand.
Bow your head with me. Lord, I thank you for providing us with this city and its open government so we can serve your needs. I thank you for my fellow commissioners and the hard work that they put in up here. I'm interfacing with the city staff, who I also thank you for. Thank you for the public that comes in here and watches us do the work for them. I also want to thank you for watching over our soldiers as they're about to head back to war. And I pray in your name, amen.
Please join me in saluting this great nation of ours. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united, God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. The ref off, please.
Commissioners Deanna Cook.
Present.
Miguel Coronado.
Present.
Cassandra Harvey. Absent. Raj Marley.
Here.
Fabian Torriciano.
Here.
Vice Chairman Randy Hall.
Here.
Chairman James Vos.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
Any person who would like to address the Commission tonight on any agendized item and needs to leave early, we offer a 10-minute period at this time for early speakers. They would be given two minutes each. Do we have any early speakers?
None that have indicated, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the Recording Secretary and identify the agenda item you'd like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Commission at the time the item is discussed. Speaker's cards are available at the rear of the chamber. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each, other than the applicant who, if they wish to present their case, will be given an appropriate time to present the information they have. For the record, tonight, we have received some modifications to our agenda. Under item number three, Conditional Use Permit 1105, there was a location correction. The minutes from July 21st, a copy has been provided to us. Item number three, Conditional Use Permit 1105, the staff report on page one, location is corrected. We did receive a letter of comment on Conditional Use Permit 1105. On Conditional Use Permit 1408 and tentative tract map 72875, the condition list has an added condition 19, and the mitigation monitoring, mitigation condition number two has been added. Condition Use Permit 14-11, the staff report on page one, resolution number under recommendation has been corrected, and the conditional conditions list, the resolution number on the page title First item of business is our consent calendar, and we'll take up the meeting minutes of July 21st, 2014, first, of any additions or corrections anyone would like to make. None? Would you please offer a motion?
I move that we approve the July 21st meeting minutes for 2014.
Second that? Thank you. Please vote. All right, thank you. The next item on our consent calendar is the August 18th, 2014. You have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the August 18th, 2014 meeting minutes.
Thank you. You have a second, please? Any corrections or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes 4-0 with two abstentions.
All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is item number two, which is a continued public hearing on transit overlay development zone. The applicant is the City of Lancaster, and we'll have a staff report on this item.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, as you indicated, this item has been before you for several months. It was originally considered by the city's Architectural and Design Planning Commission. They ultimately made a recommendation to you for adoption. As part of your review, there have been a number of comments that were made in regards to the content of the document. As we've indicated to you in the history, there have been some changes made, and those have been incorporated into the document as it now stands. At your last meeting, there was a consensus of the Commission to place before you the necessary materials in order to recommend approval of the various actions that this would require to the City Council. We have done that for you. Once again, if you have any specific questions on the document itself, we'd be more than happy to address those for you at this time.
Thank you. There may be some. Anyone? No? Have you spent enough time on it?
One question is, on the request, you have adopt the regulatory changes as follows. How is the motion to be worded? Is it for all bullet points or?
Actually, what we did under the request was to indicate to you the actions that the resolution that we drafted would basically recommend approval of. So as far as the Commission is concerned, you simply need to move the adoption of Resolution 1412, recommending to the City Council as noted under the recommendation. I agree, there are a number of action items included within it, and we tried to break that out under the request so that you could see what those were.
On page four, the staff report at the top of the page, it leaves blank the date of the adoption by the City Council because we haven't acted yet, and assuming it's approved, then it would be forwarded to the City Council for their consideration sometime in November, maybe October?
Yes, whenever we can schedule it, and as you've noted, this would be part of the language that would actually go into the zoning code, and obviously, the provision would indicate in it the actual date of adoption of the City Council of the TOD zones.
Okay, thank you. Certainly are references in the resolution and in the document, the city's public transit station and various support facilities. There's also references to the promotion of a more sustainable, livable, walkable, and bikeable community. So this is not just a action that addresses the impact of our current transit station, but it's far more involved than that.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, then. What's your pleasure, folks? A motion, anyone?
Yeah. I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 14-12, recommending to the City Council approval of the amendments of the Lancaster General Plan and an ordinance to amend Title 17 of the Lancaster Municipal Code and the Lancaster Zoning Map to adopt Lancaster Transit-Oriented Development Zones.
Thank you. Second that? Thank you. I neglected to ask if we have any speakers on this matter, but apparently, we do not.
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Didn't mean to cut anybody off. If someone wants to speak on this matter, if they do, we'll be happy to hear you before we vote. None? All right, then.
Motion passes 6-0, and we will schedule this for an upcoming City Council meeting. With consideration.
Thank you for all the good work.
Yes, although he's not present this evening, I'd like to recognize Chris Ahnny, our assistant planner on this. He's been quite involved for the last 18 months in terms of outreach, community meetings, and so forth.
He gave him the evening off, huh?
No, he actually announced he was just leaving for a week or so on vacation, so you know how it is.
He's probably sitting by his computer monitor, watching every move we make tonight.
Yeah, I believe that's probably true.
No doubt. Next item is new public hearings, Conditional Use Permit 1105. This is a extension or a consideration of a one-year extension on a previously approved Conditional Use Permit, so without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter. Do we have a staff report?
If you would like one. Okay. CEP 1105 is located on the east side of Eightieth Street West between Avenue J4 and J8. It's an 80-acre project site for the approval of 20 megawatt to solar facilities. The applicant is requesting a one-year extension, which would take it to September 19th, 2015. This would be the second of three possible extensions. All of the mitigation measures and previously adopted conditions of approval would remain the same, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any question?
Is this the project that we received the letter on?
That is correct.
Did any of the stuff that they bring up, did you want to address it here?
No, and I actually talked to Jennifer this morning. Her concern was more confusion over the location of the site in relation to her property. I did clear that up for her. I did explain to her that this was an approved project, and the applicant was requesting a one-year extension. She wanted to know if the applicant had plans to immediately start construction. I said not that I was aware of, hence the need for the one-year extension, and she asked me to let her know what the Planning Commission decided tomorrow morning. So I will send her an email tomorrow morning, but she did not specifically bring up any of the issues on the letter, simply asked what had been done with it, and I said the Planning Commissioners had all received the copy.
Thank you.
And we've acknowledged that, thank you. Ms. Corbett? The issue that was raised by the one letter we did receive relative to the noticing type graphical error, and one notice identifying the property on Eightieth Street East rather than Eightieth Street West, is that a problem for us to consider the matter?
Mr. Chairman, I don't see that as being a problem. There is a contradiction in the noticing, but it does include the correct location. If there was any confusion, somebody could have called or written in, as this woman did, and I think that that resolves the matter.
All right, thank you. All right. Do we have any speakers on this matter, Mr. Ludiki?
No cards on this matter, Mr. Chairman.
Then, would it be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on Conditional Use Permit 1105?
I make a motion that will grant a one-year extension to September 19th, 2015, based on findings contained in staff report and subject to the revised condition list, attachment or regulations number 11-16.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. For the comments, please vote.
The motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. Next item is a new public hearing on Conditional Use Permit 12-09, which is also a one-year extension on a previously considered project. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter. Anyone care to hear a staff report on this? Doesn't look like it. All right, then. Do we have speakers on this?
I have no speakers on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then. It would be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on 12-09.
Yeah, I would just like to make a comment before we do so.
Go ahead.
Didn't we add a new grading condition on this particular project?
Yes, that is correct. Do you have a question about it, or just noting that we've added the grading condition that we typically condition all PV projects? All right, okay. Very good. And that's working out fairly well, isn't it, on?
Yes, it is. We've had a couple of problems, but they've been corrected pretty quickly, and a lot of that has to do simply with the fact that we've had no rain, and anybody being on a project site is going to generate dust.
Obviously. All right, then. So without objection, the public hearing is closed, and may we have a motion, please?
Motion that would grant a one-year extension to September 15th, 2015, based on findings contained in the staff report, and subject to revised condition list, attachment to Resolution Number 12-23.
Second that? Thank you. Questions or comments?
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. Next item is on our agenda is item number five, which is a Conditional Use Permit 14-08 and a tentative tract map 72875. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter, and I assume we have speakers? Mr. Ludiki?
I'm going to take that remote from Brian.
The request is tentative tract map 72875, and because it's a residential plan development or RPD, there is also a Conditional Use Permit application with it, 14-08. The applicant is Bruno Barbieri, and he is proposing to build 65 single-family homes on 10.15 acres located on a northeast corner of 25th Street East and Avenue J8. If you take a look at the subdivision map, you can see that it's a little bit different than our traditional R7,000 subdivision. This is located in a R7,000 zone, but the lot sizes are smaller than your traditional The lots range in size from about, it averages 3,500 square feet, so it's about half the size of a traditional R7,000 lot. The density for the project is six and a half units per acre. In exchange for the increased density, the applicant is proposing some enhanced design changes. These changes include an alley-loaded site design, which allows for enhanced streetscapes along avenues J6, J8, and 25th Street East. There are also internal paseos within the community. Garages and driveways will be located behind the residential homes, and this will emphasize windows, porches, and entryways along the streets. Paseos will have enhanced landscaping and will be used as pedestrian connections within the community. Residential homes within the two internal blocks that you see in the map will face the paseos. Residents walking along paseos will be sheltered from vehicular traffic. Since private yard space is reduced as a result of the smaller lots, the community will offer a pocket park or a top-lot picnic area, which will serve as additional open space for residents. And then there's additional open space adjacent to the drainage channel that runs along the eastern portion of the project site. Couple more unique things about this particular subdivision. I point out the streets adjacent to this project, 25th Street East and Avenue J8. These are traditionally secondary arterial streets with a right-of-way of 100 feet, and in traditional development, you would have two vehicle lanes in each direction with residential homes backing onto the streets. As you can see here, the homes front onto the arterial streets, and instead of two vehicle lanes in each direction, it's one vehicle lane in each direction, and this is intersected with a proposed roundabout at the intersection of 25th Street East and Avenue J8. This design is intended to reduce vehicular speed along Avenue J8 and 25th Street East. This also allows for on-street parking along Avenue J8 and 25th Street East. So these are, again, additional design changes that are different than what you would find in what we call a traditional R7,000 subdivision. The red lines are the highlighted areas where on-street parking is permitted. There's on-street parking along Avenue J6, Avenue J8, and 25th Street East. In the internal blocks, there are private streets. The private streets that run north-south are 28 feet in width. The 28 feet would allow for parking on one side while maintaining a 20-foot fire lane. The private streets that run east-west, I don't know if there's a pointer here, here to go. These two streets that run east-west do not have parking. They are 24 feet in width, which allows for fire lane, but also adequate backup from the rear garages. Then there's a private street that runs along the eastern portion of the project, and there is parking on one side of the street. Given the street parking and with 24 feet per parking space, these areas yield about 71 spaces for the residents. So for 65 lots, the 71 spaces would offer a little bit more than one guest parking space per home. Of course, this assumes that the two-car garage for each home would be used for parking.
Excuse me, big assumption.
These are some of the elevations. Unfortunately, the one that's colored is actually the rear elevation where the garage entrances. The front elevation is actually this particular picture over here. This is Plan One. This is the elevation for Plan Number Two. This is the elevation for Plan Number Three. And again, this is the front versus the back here. And this is the elevation for Plan Number Four. And really, this looks like the front, but it really is the elevation that faces the alley, and this is the front of the house for Plan Four. Then there are floor plans for each of the plans here. I've also provided, I may not go through these slides, but I prepared some slides of existing small-lot residential subdivisions. If you're interested, I'd be happy to go through them. If not, we can save these slides for another day.
How many do you have?
There's three, three different projects that.
So this isn't like going on your vacation to Yosemite or something?
No, not exactly.
Okay. Why don't you show them to us?
All right. The first one is Palmdale Vineyard. Some of you may be familiar with this project, 25th Street East. The density is slightly more than the one proposed of this project, seven units per acre, as opposed to six and a half. This is the site layout. These are some on-the-ground photos. Again, it's certainly more dense than your traditional single-family development. This is a paseo that runs in between the residential homes. This is the alley access. This project offers a fairly small side yard that could be used as patio space. And this is the open space that's offered in this project. More amenities. These are shared amenities. These are just pictures of the details. This is part of an alley, but you can see that it's still landscaped, and they have an area for trash bins. These are some interior pictures and a sample floor plan. Second example, Ash Creek cottages of Brea. This is even more dense than what's proposed, 11 units per acre. Here's some basic facts, 96 units on eight and a half acres. The lots are approximately 2,500, 3,000 square feet. The floor plans range from 1,400 square feet to 1,600 square feet. Again, these are alley-loaded, and they have common amenities. This is an area photo of Ash Creek cottages. It's located adjacent to a commercial development in Brea. This is what it looks like on the ground. They're alley-loaded. They have common courtyards. Some more images of the project and sample floor plans. The third one is actually out in the central valley, City of Hanford. Seven units per acre. This is the site plan. Similar layout, you have small lots, and you have small interior blocks with, this is a neighborhood park, and this is a paseo that runs through the project. 150 homes, about two acres of park space. This is the standard site layout. The lots are also about 3,500 square feet, and you can see, given the building footprint, the backyards are reduced, but it's enough for a patio space. These were the proposed elevations for this project, and these are some on-the-ground photos after they were built. It's a little bit dark because it was a foggy central. It's a little bit dark because it was a foggy Central Valley day that day. Yes. Let's see. And this is the neighborhood park. This is the, this one is not alley-access per se. This is still, they're just narrow streets, but this is a garage that fronts the narrow streets. And this is the backyard space. It's not big, but it's enough for a patio. The interior of these homes, they look, they're very similar to what you would find in a traditional single-family home. And that's it.
So how far a walk is it to the Superior Dairy Ice Cream parlor from the Syntex project?
This project is located on Twelfth Street West, and...
That's about ten blocks then?
No, it's about two miles. I used to work in Hanford that time, familiar with this project. I was a planner on this back in 'oh four.
You've never had ice cream at the...
I have. Superior is located next to City Hall. It's a very, it's about fifteen steps.
I'm assuming we have speakers on this matter?
We do have one speaker's card, Mr. Chairman, from the, I think representing the applicant.
Okay.
Carl Malik.
Carl Malik. Good evening, Carl.
Good evening.
Long time.
It has been.
How you been?
Good.
How about you? Very good, welcome.
It hasn't been a long time by design, though. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Carl Malik with Kimlin Hornet and Associates. We're the civil engineers that prepared the tentative map and CUP application. I'd like to thank the staff for working with us on this project. It was very interesting because it's not a unique project, but it's a unique project for Lancaster, so it was interesting working on it and dealing with the different aspects of it. And we're in agreement with conditions and are here to answer any questions if you have any.
We'll have some, Carl. I certainly will, maybe others. Anyone? Mr. Cook?
Is there three-hundred-and-sixty-degree architecture all the way around on these
Yes, it is. We'll have to, I don't know if we have side elevations, but we have the front and rears, yes.
And what about, what's the minimum width of a street for EMS, emergency?
Twenty feet is the minimum width.
Okay.
The minimum width we have in this project is twenty-four. A little bit wider based for the city's recommendations, just to have a little extra width for backing up out of the garages.
I thought that I heard twenty and twenty-four, or is it twenty-four on all the streets?
The minimum is twenty. These alleys are designed minimum twenty-four, so you have four beyond the twenty.
Okay. And what about the traffic flow on J six? Is it the same as J eight?
No, J six is essentially a collector. Where J eight and Twenty-Fifth are secondary arterials.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Says that they're gonna have private streets. Does that mean that they're gonna develop a homeowners association and take care of them themselves, or...
Yes, the streets and the public areas within the development will be maintained by the HOA.
The HOA?
Yeah.
Do you have a process to write the HOA with the city's help, or have they approached you with that yet?
We haven't set the HOA up yet, but that'd be one of the things we'll do during the final stages.
This is an exciting project because it's different than what we're used to in the Valley, and I was just wondering if maybe you could explain why you went for such smaller lot sizes and the paseo concept and alley-loading. There's gotta be a reason behind it, and I was wondering if you...
In fact, we had this map entitled, or this property entitled back in 2006 for seven thousand square foot lots and thirty-seven lots. And with the economy going down, it never proceeded past that. And the owner and developer approached us, you know, about eight months, a year ago, and we started looking at different alternatives to what the market was, where the market was going. And looking at different examples, and one in particular in the Valley is the Vineyard project, which you showed, which KB built about Twenty-Fifth East and south of Palm Dale Boulevard. And that was a very successful project as far as a little smaller house, smaller lots, lower price point, and it just worked in today's economy. Also, a lot of developers that we've talked to and have done research with are looking in the future as far as water usage per household, maintenance and that type of thing. And the smaller-lot subdivisions are actually very popular in other parts of California, Southern California and the Bay Area. So there's a lot of examples and kind of market trends going to that direction.
Thank you.
Don't go away, Carl. We have more.
Right.
Anyone else? Go ahead. Go ahead. Oh, sorry. Excuse me, go ahead.
No, he answered the question better.
Oh, okay. Well, where to start? Actually, one of the conditions is to dedicate and improve the drainage structure on the east side of the property, right?
That's correct.
Which is about sixty-three and a half feet wide and six-hundred-and-some-odd feet long.
Right.
As a condition of approval, which takes about an acre out of your gross acreage, puts your yield closer to eight per acre than six and a half, I think. But at any rate, Lot Number Sixty-seven then is conditioned to be landscaped, right?
Correct.
But you talk about all the nifty water savings on smaller lots, so how do you plan on approaching that?
We'll have to get creative on the landscaping. The landscape architect that's done the preliminary plans, you're probably familiar with Joe Veronin, he's very much up on the desert environment, desert landscaping, irrigation methods, and he's, yeah, we're looking at his direction as far as doing something that's sensible in those areas.
The other condition, one of the other conditions of development is the intersection of J eight and Twenty-Fifth East and the residential roundabout. And I don't know the answer to this question, so maybe you do. Are you required to develop the entire roundabout or only half of it, like you typically do on a half-street with a normal subdivision? What do we do here?
My understanding, we're conditioned to do the entire roundabout. I don't think I've ever seen a partial roundabout developed.
Neither have I. I was just curious on how you're gonna do that. Now, the street to the, Twenty-Fifth to the south of J eight is an undeveloped street, right?
So the south is undeveloped, to the west is undeveloped. The only thing developed in the area is southwest, catty-corner to this.
Right. Okay. I couldn't read the floor plan designation per lot. And the reason I raise the issue is because you're talking about a number of floor plans that yield between five and six bedrooms. However, you have very limited off-site parking, the majority of which is on the public thoroughfare, not the private streets. So if you take the public streets out of it and you stack them on the three, on the east side, or excuse me, the east side of three internal streets, your yields, what, thirty maybe, thirty-five?
Uh...
Yes, I'm not asking for anything accurate.
A little bit more than half of those, yeah, are internal.
So talk to me about the livability of a project like this with a five-bedroom house and more than one teenager that's driving, plus mom and dad.
Yeah, it may not be suited for that type of household as much as a larger lot would be. Typically, on a seven thousand square foot lot with a sixty-foot frontage, you're gonna have room for maybe two cars on the street and take the driveway out of it, so this reduces it by one. It's just the nature of this type of project. If you have a little bit more density and smaller lots, you're gonna end up with smaller or less number, you know, street parking.
What about driveway parking?
Right-of-way parking?
Drive-way.
Oh, driveway parking.
Parking.
The driveways, in some cases, are long enough to park in, in some cases, they're not. It varies in different lots.
So the two-story project, or some of the two stories have little or no driveway and some do?
Uh, yes.
And some of the single story have sufficient driveway parking and others don't? The point is, you know, people don't park in their, in their garages. We all know that. A two-car garage might squeeze in one car and everybody, and all their junk, right? So I raise the issue. It's a concern that I have. However, it's a legitimate presentation and a legitimate proposal for the, you know, for the land use. I just point out some of the concerns that I have. Limited onsite parking, you know, I doubt, for instance, if someone lived in Lot Fifty, say sixty-three, and they parked on J eight, they'd have a bit of a hike because the parking space across the street, and all of them across the street are used up. Could happen, right? Not unreasonable.
It could happen. I think we've all been down kind of typical subdivisions where we see the street pretty well aligned with cars.
Go ahead.
It's interesting, I took a tour of the City of Santa Monica the other day with the city engineer, and they're starting a project that doesn't have any parking at all. Of course, that's Santa Monica, smaller units, condos. But it was interesting that they're actually gonna move ahead with a project like that. I kind of joked and asked if they had valley parking for the bicycles, but they might do that. There are some limitations, Chairman, related to that. I think that in the disclosures when the properties are sold, that that type of thing needs to be lined out.
And as one of the commissioners mentioned, the homeowners association documents have to be approved by the city staff before the map is final. And I would suggest that those parking considerations be really considered with this project, assuming it's approved. Lot twenty-four and twenty-five, those are rear-loaded or so-called alley-loaded lots?
Correct.
So there's sufficient turning radius for Lot Twenty-five?
Yes, I think, do you have the site plan with footprints on it? Even the landscape plan would probably show that. I think that you had up earlier.
The scale, the east-west scale's not on this. North-south forty-one feet, but the east-west is not, and I'd guess it to be, without putting the scale on it, maybe twenty-four, maybe twenty. So it's sort of a flag lot, almost, isn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know what you call it, I don't know what you call it in an RPD zone, but it's like a flag lot.
Yeah, it's effectively a flag lot. Yeah, I knew we looked at that. I'd have to look at the site plan again to give you a dimension on that, but we did look at, you know, look back out of that garage and make that turn to get out of the flag.
Right. Okay. That's all I have. Others may have something to add. Anyone? All right, thank you, Mr. Malik. Do we have any other speakers on this?
I have no other cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then. It would be appropriate to close the public hearing without an objection and consider a motion on this matter.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number fourteen dash thirteen approving conditional use permit Number fourteen dash oh eight and tentative tract map Number seven two eight seven five.
Second that. Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
Motion passes six zero.
All right, good luck with your project. Next item is item number six, which is conditional use permit one four dash eleven. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter. Do we have speakers on this?
I have a speaker's card, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Could we have brief staff report then, please?
The applicant for the project is Carolyn Arnold for Wholesome Caribbean Restaurant and Bar. The project is located on four-two-one-zero-one Sierra Highway. This is just north of Columbia Way. The proposal is for on-sale beer and wine for a bona fide restaurant, ABC license type forty-one, and also live entertainment. The restaurant portion will be Mondays through Fridays from, let me find the hours here. Well, I'll comment on the live entertainment portion. The live entertainment portion is Friday and Saturday nights, nine PM to two AM, and Sunday evenings from six PM until ten PM. All other hours would be typical restaurant hours. The tenant space is two-thousand-three-hundred-forty-five square feet. There's an outdoor patio. For the entertainment portion of the use, the business is conditioned to provide two security guards per one hundred patients. And I would say that the primary condition for this project is that the applicant maintain the definition of a bona fide restaurant, and this is outlined in condition number two, where not less than fifty-one percent of the business is derived, is not less than fifty-one percent is derived from the sale of food and a kitchen and dining area that is, that remains open for business. We've included the standard conditions that we have for nightclub entertainment uses, and these are, these include no one under the age of twenty-one being admitted, no self-service of alcohol beverages, no loitering in the parking lot, again, the security measures or security conditions, and maintaining that the exterior doors be closed during entertainment hours or when there's live music. There's conditions for surveillance systems for entrance and the exits, and there are restrictions on pyrotechnic displays and requirements for fire protection systems. Given the conditions imposed and recommended by staff, staff believes that we could make a recommendation for this project.
All right, thank you. And we do have on file a uncontested letter on this matter from the applicant.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a speaker?
I have a speaker who has not indicated whether they favor or oppose, Christina Ong.
Good evening, welcome.
I'm from Regalot Motel, just next door from the Caribbean restaurant they're gonna open. And I have that experience before, that before is Mazuka Restaurant. When they have entertainment, like, live entertainment, they open the door, side door and front door, and all of the customer are by the street. So it's very bothering my business, it's a motel. And I called the sheriff, and the city sheriff also at that time, and what the owner said is cannot survive to put another cooler or air conditioner, that's why they opened the door. And they sell the ticket, I think, as many as they want, and the restaurant is small, is not fit, that's why many customer are by the street yelling, screaming, and that's my consideration.
So it wasn't a very pleasant neighbor to have. And now it's vacant and a new operator is coming in with.
Yeah, it's vacant like more than two years, at least two years.
I can't, I can't remember, I can't remember how many businesses have been in there in the last thirty years, but it's probably been fifteen, maybe twenty. You have the businesses to the north, right?
Oh, yeah, we have business in there for thirty years.
Right.
Same owner, same.
All right. You're concerned about a nightclub operation, sounds like to me.
The reason is they, they open the door, the front door, side door.
Right.
And the visitor is outside.
Okay. We understand, I think. Anyone have any other questions? All right, thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
I don't have any other cards, Mr. Chairman, but I, the applicant may be present, I don't know.
If the applicant's here and you wish to address us, you're certainly welcome to. Please, please come forward and identify yourself. Thank you.
And I thank you guys for having this here, and I appreciate it. I, I do hear what the lady just said, and mezika is mezika. Wholesome Caribbean Restaurant that I'm proposing is a completely different type of environment. I've, only after I lease the location, that's when I started hearing some issues that used to be there. But let me just get right to the point. My experience with restaurants and entertainment goes back over twenty-five years. I, what I'm proposing here is, is a location where, I'm a teacher, let me just put that out, I'm, actually, I'm a little bit fluttered here, just give me a second.
No worries.
I am here, I came with this proposal to try to offer a clean, safe environment for professionals like myself, teachers that's been, wanted to do a little bit of Caribbean entertainment and, and food, they've been asking for the food for a while. And this project is gonna be run professionally. I have over twenty, over seven years' experience in restaurant management, and this is beside the teaching that I'm doing right now. I have over twenty, twenty-five years doing entertainment, festivals and so on. So when it comes to crowd management, when it comes to restaurant safety of food and safety of the public, trust me, I, I have it in my heart, I've done this before, and by all means, this is not a mezika. So I do understand the lady's concern, but I do want you to understand what I'm trying to bring in this location. Something completely clean, something wholesome, that's what I'm trying to do. And, you know, any, any other questions, I'm definitely here to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Go ahead.
In your location, since you wanna be a good neighbor, has the air conditioning been upgraded so that when next summer comes along, you don't have to open those doors?
It is working completely okay. Two air conditions are working in there right now. It was completely upgraded and fixed.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else have any questions? Go ahead, Mr.
I would personally recommend that you sit down with your neighbor and see what you guys could do, and perhaps have her over and taste some of your food, first and foremost, and then second, to make sure and assure her that those doors perhaps are not gonna be open to disturb her business, because apparently she's been there for over thirty years, and I think she needs that consideration. So if you sat with her and spoke with her and see how you guys could work this situation out, I'm sure.
That's definitely a must, and I will do that. All right?
Very good, thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Part of, one of the conditions is, is all exterior doors will be kept closed at all times when amplified or live music is being played in the restaurant, is that?
That's in, that's in the conditions, I will follow everything that you have on it.
And with our city staff here, she does see their doors open, who should she call? Should she call the city, or should she call the sheriff? Or should she call? I'm just looking for how she could enforce this if she, you know, runs into this.
Well, you can call the sheriff, but I'm not sure they'll come, you know, and deal with that. I think it would be far better if she had his phone number or his manager's phone number, and she were able to say, "It's getting a little loud, can you check on that?" And that's been the more successful thing. If there is some other issue that seems to be an ongoing issue and she can't seem to get any resolution of it, that would be the time to contact the city.
Sir, would you be willing to give her your phone number tonight, where she could call if she had some sort of concern like that?
By all means.
Okay. Also, too, you're supposed to be a bona fide restaurant, a bona fide restaurant has to have fifty-one percent of its sales in food. Sometimes that's hard to do, and in situations like that, in the past, we have conditioned a review process. Is that possible in a case like this, that we should have a six-month review, or no?
You can call it out if you wish, however, as a reminder, under the terms of the city's alcohol ordinance, the commission has the right to review any alcohol CUP at any time if they feel necessary. But yes, if the commission feels it would be worthwhile to have a formal review, you can certainly put that in, say, six months after they initiate operation or something of that type.
We don't normally do that for bona fide restaurants, more of a nightclub type of scene that handles food as a sideline, right?
Maybe the appropriate thing, assuming approval, of course, maybe the appropriate thing to do would be to, if any of us feel that it's an issue, we can always agendize it for a future planning commission meeting, if there's issues, either from the neighbors or from anyone, for that matter, rather than, I know we've conditioned other projects in the past for a six-month review and really had nothing to review, so I wouldn't wanna put the applicant in that position or staff, taking staff time for a non-review review.
If we do have a review, Mr. Chairman, that would mean that we could either revoke the entire CUP or make other conditions?
I think you have to have, you have to ask the city attorney, but I think you have to go through a noticing process for revocation and that, it's a very long process.
That's correct, you would need to go through the standard process for revocation.
Right. First thing though is a hearing. So, anyway, don't get nervous, Mr. Arnold.
Oh, no need to. I guarantee you there will be no need for any revocation.
All right.
I've spent too much money in my education, I'm not about to lose it over not running a business properly. I've done this before.
All right. Assuming this is approved tonight, when would you anticipate your opening?
Six weeks down the road, I do have some resurfacing of the parking lot that I got, I have to deal with, and that's part of the condition. So I'm working on trying to get somebody in to do that.
Matter of months then?
We can answer to that.
You would imagine a matter of months?
Uh, yes, two months.
Couple of months, okay. Very good. Anyone else have anything they'd like to ask or add? No? Thank you, Mr. Arnold, appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
All right, anything further from staff? All right then, it's appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on conditional use permit fourteen dash eleven.
I move that we adopt resolution number fourteen dash eleven approving conditional use permit fourteen dash eleven. Is that fourteen fourteen or fourteen one? I gotta line through.
Fourteen eleven.
Fourteen fourteen.
I got fourteen eleven.
The resolution's fourteen fourteen, the conditional use permit is fourteen eleven.
So adopt resolution number fourteen fourteen approving conditional use permit number fourteen eleven.
There you go. Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes six-zero.
Very good. Good luck with your project. That concludes our action items tonight. However, we do have some continued business to take up. Item number seven, which is temporary promotional signs and banners. Such an exciting subject, we can hardly wait for the.
Audio vision with, well, not audio, well, yeah, audio if we're talking, visual aids to help us along here. As you'll recall, this was originally discussed, to some extent, by the planning commission, I believe, in March, February and March. At that time, you had some other items that kind of, kind of took your time away as a group, but one of the things that you had agreed on was trying to get some, some pictures or other visual types of representations so that you could have a starting point on a discussion. We did establish a Dropbox folder, several of you took advantage of that to put photographs into that. We've tried as, as kind of a starting point here to break those into some form of categories, and we'd really like to take some time to go through those with you this evening. And what we're really trying to get an idea on is the direction that, as a group, you'd like to see the draft of an ordinance go. As you'll recall, the council's direction was to take a look, I believe, at a sensible, I think that was the word that they used, ordinance in regards to temporary signs and banners, and I really believe, in the context of their conversation, they were, they were looking at commercial businesses or those types of establishments. So there's all sorts of directions that a city can go on these. They can obviously regulate in terms of size and location and time and type, and we're just trying to really get a feel from you based on discussion, things that you feel we ought to give some consideration to as allowable, probably not at the point of trying to decide how much time for that, or things that, quite frankly, as a commission, you just aren't interested in allowing. And we'll try to use the photographs as a guide to that. I think all of these were taken by commissioners, correct? So if you are the taker of the photograph and you had a particular thing that you were trying to point out, that would be helpful. We've done our best to try to categorize them as best we could, so. So we'll start with wall banners, at least what we assumed were pictures of wall banners. So, now, this obviously is not directly part of a commercial business, it's part of a sales effort for, you know, new single-family homes, and I would defer to whoever took the photograph as to any comment that you may have on it.
Those look familiar to me.
Well, I think we've all seen things similar to it.
However.
They are not permitted under the city's current sign code, you know, at least not in this form, so.
And that may well have been why I posted it. That particular project is so louder, they're no longer marketing. I pointed it, I brought it forward because it was, as I understand it, clear violation of the current regulation. So for a matter of discussion, are we satisfied with limiting the banners and flags and various other things that aren't currently permitted on the sign ordinance in the residential development marketing arena, or would we wanna change it?
Well, it seems like that's the one thing in the sign ordinance that we've had in the past, is that the real estate signs can be up forever. Most of the strip malls or shopping centers I see have a big lease sign out front, and it's been there for years. A banner like that's self-defeating, it'll eventually blow itself to ribbons and come down.
That's often what happens.
But there is in the guidelines that they gave us, the regulations must establish a duration of time which temporary promotional signs can be displayed. To me, that fits temporary promotional sign. And are we willing to offer a certain time that it can be up? Can they take it down, put it back up? Can they put it up on the weekends, take it down during the week, that type of thing?
Well, I think the reality of, of single-family new home marketing techniques is you get bootleg signs put up on Friday night and they come down Sunday night. They're prohibited under the current regulation in the city if that's not enforced.
When I ran into this, what I ran into this weekend, I wasn't able to answer because I didn't put them on, we were apologized. But when we got off the offer on Twenty of the West and J eight, picking up, there's a telephone pole there, and KB had signs stapled to that pole I noticed this weekend. So it turned, although it's not really a wall banner, it's, it's a developer company that's stapling to the telephone poles, and I thought that would be a huge issue as well. So I know that they use billboards quite effectively, sometimes they use the people on the corner that spin, you know, the signs. So I know there's all different types to appropriately get the message across, but that kind of concerned me.
So the type of sign you've, the marketing sign taped up, stapled up, nailed up, pegged up, whatever methodology is used, is prohibited on the current ordinance in the city, right?
Yes, under a number of, a number of factors, they're not allowed in the city right-of-way. The, and they're not permitted actually to be off-site. Now, the exception to that is that there are directional signage kiosks that are maintained by the BIA, and developers are supposed to go and, and get space on there. Although it's probably a little bit outside of this discussion on commercial, the original understanding between the city and the Building Industry Association was that we'll permit the BIA to put up these kiosk signs. the BIA to put up these kiosk signs, allow them to rent or sell the space or however they do it. And in exchange for that, they were supposed to help us kind of try to enforce the other bootleg kind of signs that proliferate.
And for the helping of trying to enforce it is they pay a company to put them up and take them down. They being the residential developer whose name is displayed on those signs. Even though they happen to be probably the only developer in town building a residential project. And I've noticed on other agendas where there's concessions being given in other arenas for this, for those types of development. So it's a matter of if these types of signs, as Commissioner Cook pointed out, or these types of banners, or any other sign that's prohibited on the current ordinance, seems to me that we ought to enforce the ordinance as it stands or change it. So if anybody wants to change the ordinance as it relates to residential marketing sign, please speak up.
Well, if we can't enforce it, then what's the point?
I'm not saying we can't enforce it, I'm saying it's not being enforced.
Is that because of lack of?
Have no idea. But, you know, that's a, that's not in my department. But the fact is, they're not being enforced. That be correct, Mr. Reynolds?
I, I don't know how much effort's being put towards them. Not being the person who oversees code enforcement. For things that go up over the weekend, my guess is that's outside the normal hours that, you know, review happens. Although just having a conversation with the assistant city attorney, it's not that code enforcement is unaware of, of this. I don't know if you wanted to make your comment.
Um, the bootleg real estate signs that you were mentioning, Mr. Chairman, are exactly one of the concerns that code enforcement has expressed to me because they don't work on the weekend. So if something gets put up Friday night and taken down Sunday evening, there's nobody on duty to address it at that time.
There's a cure for that, you know?
Sir?
The new hire, whoever that may be, or a negotiated hours of work under the current federal laws to allow someone to work on the weekend at normal pay to do just that.
That's certainly something.
This may sound like an old record because I've spoken to this issue before. This is not the first time. I personally have nothing against residential development, for God's sake, I'm a real estate broker, but, and certainly nothing against KB or any other residential developer. Just seems to me if we have an ordinance, it ought to be enforced. Either that or we take it off the books, recommend the city council take it off the books. I mean, it's, it's silly to have a regulation that's unenforced, to me. Now, I'm not a city council member, but that's my feeling on the subject.
I, I think you're right. I think probably that is something that was in council's mind. I, I want to also just add, at the most recent code enforcement meeting that we had, it was brought to my attention that whoever is putting up those weekend real estate signs has taken to installing a small wooden stake to the telephone pole and then stapling the signs to that wooden stake. I guess it's easier to take them out and put them in than to, to use the heavy-duty staples for the telephone pole itself. So that's a new wrinkle.
Well, there's also numerous used car lots that pop up on the weekend and who knows how many number of flea markets that pop up on every dusty corner that we have in town. So there'd be plenty of work for this person that Jim proposed to do. And it wouldn't just be signs, it could be a variety of things. But people have flea markets on the weekends and they put their cars up for sale because they need to sell them and they need to, and we don't have thrift stores or a lemon lot here in town that we could have moved them towards, maybe looking into something like that.
So the issue of, of this type of a marketing sign, is it, is it the consensus that we should, we should encourage the enforcement of the current ordinance or we ought to change, ought to recommend the change?
I would encourage the enforcement of the current.
Anyone else? Anyone disagree? I, you, all right? Moving right along. We've made it past page one, number one.
Banner on what I'm assuming is a commercial building?
Yep.
Actually.
The next two are commercial buildings.
Yeah.
Why don't you go to the next slide? More dramatic. So there, there currently are provisions in the ordinance that allow with permit a certain size of banners for a period of time?
Yes.
Similar to this but much smaller?
Much smaller than this. And there, there are time limits depending on whether they get a permit or don't get a, a temporary permit as the ordinance currently reads.
So how long typically could a temporary permit for a grand opening be up? A year and a half maybe or two?
Well, by, by practice, we, we pretty much say if you're going to do grand opening, that's, that should be about a thirty-day limit on those. But we, we have a couple of things that occur. Number one, grand openings for some places seem to go on a long time. In other cases, we, we are also encountering situations where people are, let's say, almost substituting these for what you might call more permanent signage. And we've seen both, both examples of that. But as far as size, this is way beyond what we would normally permit. I think the, the code really allows banners, if I'm remembering, Chun, it's like thirty-two square feet, something of that type if they have the permit.
Typical four-by-eight?
Yeah. So, kind of been looking at this, and I think we probably addressed in the original staff report to you, there, there are a number of cities who, not just for this kind of situation, but for, for others, will permit banners, but then they, they define that they have to be like placed on hooks, they have to be located at a corner of the building, there's a limit in how long they need a permit for every one of them. So they, they have more regulation on them, you know, but they, but they allow them. And we actually, I got into a discussion with a representative of a certain fast food chain that I won't identify who, who said, "I can't believe your city won't permit me to do X because I can do it in Lake Forest and Lake Forest is far better than Lancaster", was kind of her comment. And I said, "Well, that will certainly, you know, entice us to want to help work with you more." So, but as you look at these, I would say that most places that I've, I've reviewed allow banners in some form. But once again, it comes down to size, type of material, display and length of time.
So at a future meeting or in your next staff report, if you would make, make recommendations to us for temporary banners for grand openings, size, how they're mounted, where they're mounted, that sort of stuff, would that be appropriate?
Certainly.
So we don't have to?
It says here that it can include a maximum number of times per year and a duration of days per occurrence. I like.
I was talking about grand opening banners. I'm not talking about.
Promotion.
Promotional banners. I'm talking about grand opening banners.
Going out of business promotional?
Pardon?
Going out of business promotional?
Right. Then you're going out of business for a year and a half or, or you have a banner in place of an identifying business sign because it's less expensive, quicker to produce and ages rapidly over time. I can think of a couple of those that are still up a couple of years later, which I don't think are permitted, are they?
I would say not likely.
Now, does code enforcement have the authority to take these, remove these as they would say graffiti?
It's my understanding that when they are in the city's right-of-way, they do take them down. If they're on private property, they of course need to, and they're, and they're impermissible under the code, they need to ascertain who's responsible for it. If it's not, if it's an off-site advertisement, if you will, then they need to try to track down the responsible person. But to the extent that they're able to, they take them down right away.
Thank you.
But that's in the public right-of-way primarily.
And undeveloped private property as well.
But something like this that we're looking at would have to be removed by the owner of the property, tenant, whatever?
Yes, it would. And typically, my understanding, it may vary from officer to officer, but typically I think they would go into the business and talk to the, whoever the manager is or the business owner, issue a notice of violation, immediately issue administrative citations should that be necessary to encourage them to take it down quickly.
Now, would that also be filed against the property owner or the tenant?
Generally, in a business situation, they would focus on the tenant, on the business operator, not the property owner. However, we, we do bring in the property owner if we're not getting any compliance at all from the business owner because sometimes they just don't care. So you put a little pressure on the property owner, they're going to make sure their tenants are complying because they don't want, they don't want the headache.
So is there any, so would there be any objection to having staff come back to us with a write-up on grand opening banners, for instance, as a, as a permitted use? I mean, we permit them now, right? With, with a proper, with a proper application and all that?
Correct.
Okay.
Were you only going to allow it for thirty days or can it go?
I don't know. I, I'm frankly, I'm not prepared to make that decision. I'd just like to see what staff recommend. I, I, you know, I, I don't think that's appropriate, that particular one. And neither did code enforcement that came down.
Yes, that's correct.
An expensive value lesson. So the next one, I think, is a reprise of the marketing signage for residential subdivisions. There you go. That one's been there a while.
Forever young.
Still there? Hmm? That's where I get my hair done, yeah.
No, I said the sign is forever young.
Yeah, it's forever young, yeah. It's a hair saloon and they've had a grand opening there for some period of time. And the way it's attached might not be appropriate. My guess is they don't have a permit. But I just thought it was more of a clutter than anything else, really.
Yeah, I think that's a very valid point. It probably speaks, let me just kind of say, one of the things that, you know, sometimes you get banners, and I was taking a quick look, sometimes you get banners tied between poles or things that are almost freestanding if you, or trees, sometimes I've seen them tied between trees. Most of the regulations that I've seen, when they allow banners, they will dictate they have to be on the building, they'll dictate size, they'll dictate like a location or so forth. This is a kind of an example of, of, you know, someone just saying, "That looks like a spot, I can kind of get it in there." And, you know, it's maybe not, maybe not the best location, maybe the, the grand opening, if it's there for a certain number of days, it's, there's a better way to, to do it.
Go ahead. Didn't seem very attractive to me.
No. Now, there's a grand reopening sign here. I don't know whether those should be viewed differently. But, you know, same, same sort of issue, I would say.
So typically that would require a permit?
Yes. Typically, well, under the city's current code, yes. It, it does, when it gets over, I'm, I'm going from memory here, I think when it gets over sixteen square feet, there, there's issues on times, length of time, permit, so forth, so forth and so on.
This, just for your information, this particular market has made a substantial reinvestment in their, in their store and I, I don't discount that at all. I just took the photograph of it because it was there. Go ahead.
This one, you know, there's a couple of things I guess we could look at on this. This, first of all, as far as this, it's a lease, it's a leasing sign, you know, it's, it's not a business sign or, or anything of that type. But I, I think one of the things I'd be interested in kind of hearing on is, is what do you guys think about the way it's displayed? I, I mean, what you're.
I think it's.
Forgetting for the moment it's a leasing sign, but how do you feel about the display of it?
Isn't there requirements for canned sign attached to certain buildings in that particular location where that sign is mounted currently?
Yeah, it's an old leasing sign, it's currently operating, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. It's a Mexican restaurant right now.
It's in front of your store, isn't it?
Yeah. But I don't think they still have a sign though, they still have a banner.
They do?
I think so.
Still have banners though? The reason I took this picture is because the way the building is built, there, you know, with the, it would be very difficult to see a marketing sign posted in the window just the way that the building is configured. And I'm guessing that whoever was leasing it thought the same thing and that's why they, it was actually on three sides of the building.
Okay, so there was another sign around the corner also, so to speak.
Now, whether it's appropriate or not, I mean, I, you know, the regulation would have to address, you know, if we, if we think that's appropriate for a, you know, real estate marketing method or not. Typically, you see a sign in the planter, four-by-eight or four-by-four, double-sided, whatever it may be, as a, as a marketing sign that we allow, that the city allows under this regulation, right, for real estate marketing sign?
Yeah, there's, there's provisions for, for signs for lease and sale of property.
The only reason I brought it forward was just for the discussion, really, if you have concerns about it or not.
What's a temporary sign should be?
Well, it's temporary until the property was leased, which is about a year, right?
It was at least over a year.
It seems, you know, it seems a little excessive for.
Especially when you have other restaurants or buildings that are required to put permanent signage. That's almost like penalizing financially people that are doing the appropriate thing and then losing the way that these banners exist.
Right. Right.
Yeah, one, one other thing too, may, may come into play in some of these instances. Some centers are well-managed, the management handles it pretty well, others, they don't, they don't seem to pay as much attention to it.
Might be an example or two in the photos of that. So would it be the consensus we, we don't really care for this type of signage? Don't really like it.
But the leasing signs, the four-by-eight that's in the planter, those are allowed up all the time, aren't they? They don't have a time limit.
Right.
So what's the difference? Well, I thought when we revised the sign ordinance, a couple of years ago, we went through this. In that particular location on the building, you would consider that, you would need some type of permanent signage, not temporary. Is a four-by-wooden sign permanent?
No, as far as a marketing sign, not, not a, the location. No, as far as a marketing sign, not, not a, the location of this, this particular marketing sign is where the business identifier, identifying sign would be located typically. You go look at it, you'll see where they, you know, changed businesses a number of times, and the holes in the plaster have been patched and that sort of stuff, so.
So we need to have a time limit on temporary banners regardless if they're leasing signs or grand opening signs?
Yeah, I think everybody agrees with that. So, but this, this does not fall under the definition of a real estate marketing sign under the current code, right?
No, I'm, well, I'm going to have to check on that.
May or may not, I mean, that's...
I think there is a provision for, for signage that is on a building, you know, that's of a real estate leasing or sale nature, but I, the parameters of it are something that I can't, I don't remember right offhand.
Maybe I'll look at that, then.
One more grand opening?
Yeah, that's a, that's been there a while. I think that's a, I think that's a, falls under your definition of a well-managed center or, or not. So that's actually a pedestrian level underneath the canopy at, at the door height, if you will, of the, you can see the newspaper rack to the left, so you, I'm not sure what good that does in attempting to market a grand opening, rather small, and there's, there's two of them actually on this particular property. I don't know the effectiveness of it, so...
I don't know on that particular building if they have their permanent signs, so that would...
Well, right now, I think they've got a construction fence around the front of it also, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. Anyway, I just thought it was a, a unique grand opening sign, banner. So instead of grand opening, it's now open?
Yes, for breakfast and lunch.
On the top of a parapet that you can't see until you're past it, or go down a side street that doesn't go anywhere.
But look at the cost savings versus a new neon sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, this would be, this would be the example of, you know, if you wanted to allow some kind of a, a situation, and restaurants and fast food places kind of get into this frequently, if you want to allow banners that are so many times per year, so many days per year or something, this would be the example of something like that. You know, maybe they have a special for two weeks or something like this, but, but if you wanted to allow a temporary banner of some kind, because there's some promotion, some thing going on, and in some cases, particularly if it's a chain, this one I don't think is, but if there were a chain, sometimes they're, they're required to do some kind of advertisement of that, you know, how would you want that to be done, I think, is, is...
The question it raises in my mind is the appropriateness of the location at, you know, on the, one of the principal architectural elements of the center. It just seemed to me to be kind of trashy. I don't know if that's a legitimate word to use, but...
Or tacky. Anyway, the sign, though, I think Mr. Ludeke was making the point is, is that type of sign could go up or down, up or down, and if the owner of, or the tenant wanted to have a tacky sign up, I don't think we can write regulations that say it can't be tacky.
Well, actually, I think the regulations are written for copy and duration, are they not?
Yes, and, and I have seen, as I've indicated for some of these, these things, method of attachment, if you will, where they'll say, "Your sign can only be so sized," it has to have two reinforced eye, you know, eyelids or whatever, and it has to hang on those. What that tends to do, at least, is if they know that's what they're going to do with signage, they tend to then manufacture all their signage to meet that. The cities that tend to allow these and then control it, quite often, there's that kind of provision there, because it prevents, number one, this kind of thing from happening, it prevents the, the situation where things, I don't know if any of those are in there either, where they get tied around some kind of a, an element or some kind, you know, and then you have the, the banner and the strings, if you will, or the ropes that hold it. So I, I think Chairman Voss's comment was, is this really where you'd want these to be? And I think that's a valid question, because, you know, I'm not sure I would want banners displayed on the thing where you're trying to attract attention, I mean, it was designed to, to attract attention, and maybe it ought to be, you know, over here on this lower part of the wall or something like that instead, you know, rather than on the prominent feature.
I think this also goes back to your comment about the management control of a center.
Yeah.
You know, considering, considering what's happened in the industry through the years, you know, some centers have, have cycled because of financial considerations, and current owners and managers may not necessarily be as attentive as the original developer might have been.
The sign doesn't look temporary, and it doesn't look tacky in this.
No, that, and that's actually a question or something that I wanted the commission to kind of think about. One of the things that, that is starting to happen, especially more with fast food restaurants, is they're actually, if you will, providing areas that are part of the building architecture where, where they can post these posters. Now, and I know there's pictures later on, traditionally, a lot of those have ended up in windows, and there's a limit on, you know, how much window signage you can have and so forth. One of the things that, that we've kind of been wondering as a staff is, what if we were to kind of give these, these types of locations the option? Yeah, if you want to have these, you can have them, and that's where your, your promotional stuff can go, but the offset to that is you can't put them in your windows, and they end up, you know, kind of on the wall of the building, but they're not, there's a real Gary picture here later, but you don't end up with all of this kind of plastered around the windows. It's kind of a question of, you know, what's better architecturally or from a design standpoint? You know, it's, it's an issue we've actually kicked around internally about whether it might be better to say, "Okay, you're going to provide these things, here's the way you can do it," but the offset to that is, you know, you're not going to, you're not going to have them all around your windows and doors that we tend to see otherwise. Just a thought.
Interesting discussion.
Yeah, it's, it's something that, you know, if you guys, you know, what I'm seeing now is there's places that do the, do both of them. They have them on the, the building, and then they have them in the windows, too, so...
Well, depending on, depending on the chain and their, their marketing philosophy this week or this month or next, next month, I mean, it varies. There's a constant change of marketing pieces to attract customers, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Whether they have any effect or not, I don't know, but, but the purpose of the photograph was to draw out that discussion. Do we like a permanently mounted sign on the, on the structure itself, or do, would we prefer the current regulation where it's, what, 25% of the window space?
I think the 25% is actually permanent signage. I think when it's temporary, they can go up to 40, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, couldn't we allow them to have, have the sign outside, and then instead of taking away all of their window signs, either shrink up the amount of temporary signs in the windows, so if they felt the need, they didn't have to sit there and feel like we were, you know, knocking them down, but they would have to then think of a different type of way of doing it?
Yeah, that's certainly another, another approach.
You know, as staff, our practice, when we get calls from business owners wanting to put signs on the windows, we've always told them 25% maximum coverage. We don't even bring up the, the other percentage to them, so...
Yeah, but they haven't read the code.
Sounds like a sin of omission to me.
Yeah, you know, the concern I would have for an operator of a, with a 40% coverage, when you look at the window configuration, all of a sudden, you're, you're, you can't see the interior of the space, which becomes a law enforcement issue, I think. You know, if I'm, if I'm a business operator, I would want the sheriff to be able to have clear observation if there was a problem. Others may think differently, I don't know. I don't know. Anyway, something to think about, and maybe you could kind of outline some recommendations on that as well.
Now, here's an example of the banner tied to something. I'll tell you flat out, I don't like these, but...
Neither do I. I don't know, does anybody like those?
No. I look at that every day, though.
You notice they, they punched holes through the banner so that the wind can blow through it?
Yeah, it looks like, what do they call it? Is that a jib? Is that on the, on the front of a...
Spinnaker.
Is that what the sale is? Is that what it's called?
A spinnaker is a great...
Spinnaker, there you go, that's the one. That's what it is. It's a horizontal spinnaker.
If you can have a jib, too.
Yeah.
It's a square...
Okay.
I don't think anybody's going to raise their hand and say they like that.
Okay.
Particularly tied...
Tied to other things.
...tied to, anyway.
It doesn't fit with our...
Okay, so freestanding temporary signs, well, yeah, where do you start here? There's several of them, so...
Yeah, that one blocking the pedestrian right-of-way, I thought was interesting.
Yeah, well, you know, our best experience in trying to come up with signage guidelines for the, the A-frame type signage has been downtown. You know, we do have a, a set of criteria for that, that at this point in time is sort of, we're trying to self-police with the Boulevard Association, although I will tell you, there's been some discussion about making that a little more formal, so I don't know where that's going to go at this point.
I think on these type of signs, if you're going to piggyback solar opportunities with a new build like that, I think the companies should have to share, go see the billboard, and co-market on it, rather than two separate ones. They're both going to be involved in that same project, just for consideration.
Okay. We're going to, well, I'm assuming this is for that kind of flag.
Flag.
I'll call it a flag, because I'm not sure what else to call it.
Two for the price of one there. A freestanding and a pennant.
Yeah, we have the small A-frame and the, and I think, you know, that we do need to take a look at this. Some cities do permit the flag-type signs, and, in fact, I've seen, there's one city, I'm trying to remember, it might have been Rancho Cucamonga, or was it Fontana? One of them says, "Hey, there's banners, there's, you know, there's this, there's that, pick one of them. You can have one of them, but you can't have all of them." And then they, they kind of move from there. But I guess the question we need to know in terms of drafting the ordinance, do you want to carve out an allowance for these or not? You know, kind of a basic in our code about what we want to do.
Is that for the A-frame or for the pennant that you're...
Um, I, well, you can, you know, A-frames, I think, have a, an appropriate place when you have a pedestrian-oriented environment. Every, every downtown that I've seen that's successful allows those in some form. I have a different opinion on them when they're stuck out on a main highway somewhere. That's, that's my personal viewpoint, but they make a lot of sense in a pedestrian environment where people are moving at, you know, three miles an hour on their feet.
They have very little effect at a 40 or 50 mile an hour street front.
Right, yeah, the, if, if you've got traffic rolling by at a, at a high rate of speed, that people don't see them. But, you know, these flags, these are becoming far more popular than, you know...
If you have no regulation, that's where they'll become...
Yeah, and, and they're, they're relatively easy to install, so...
Not too expensive.
So I...
They look better than the banners. They look a little bit nicer than the banners. A little bit more eye-pleasing than...
If they're well-maintained, yeah, and if, and if you can read the copy, but the, the interesting thing is, on some of them, they've got so much copy written on it, you don't know what the heck it's for, other than that it draws your eye, okey-dokey, so you go by a, a center with 40 tenants in it, and you see two or three of these up, and you wonder, okay, who and what and why?
Yeah, certainly, and, and if you do want to look in the direction of allowing them, then it becomes a matter of number, spacing, you know, as well as the height and, and other kinds of things. And this one, it looks, well, I'll ask whoever took the picture, was it hanging over the public right-of-way?
The flag, yes.
Okay. That's a, that's an issue, too, so...
They did have space there, you can see where they could have planted it back, but they, that's a pretty high-speed street, you're talking 35-plus.
Yeah.
So on the A-frame, do you think we could borrow from the downtown-specific stuff and...
Yeah, like I said, I, I really think that comes down to orientation. If you are, if you are orienting them to basically a roadway that you've got high speed or relatively high speed on, I, I don't, first of all, I don't think they're that effective, but, you know, in pedestrian environment, yeah, I don't have as much concern with them if you've got a lot of foot traffic that's moving, so, that's just my...
That's in front of the 24-hour fitness gym, and it, it has both, it has quite a bit of foot traffic and car traffic.
Yeah, what, what business was this advertising?
The check-cashing place there on the corner.
Oh. Okay.
Is that what the banner is?
Yes, that was for both, it's the same.
Well, I would, I would agree, it shouldn't be encroaching in the public right-of-way, and, and if we're going to allow them, we'd probably look at them the same as we would temporary banners on buildings. I mean, they're a certain size and...
Oh, yeah, that's good.
...copy and duration and that sort of stuff.
Okay, well, we can, if you want, draft or take a look at what some other cities have done with these, and bring you back some suggestions if you want to consider them.
Great.
One of the concerns I have with, with the flags, or whatever, whatever you call these, whatever they are, the yellow thing there, is, is that they deteriorate over time, the, you know, the sunshine deteriorates the copy, the wind tears them, and they become very unsightly. There's some other, there's some neighbors to our south and in the county jurisdiction as well, that you see the... as well that you see the proliferation of them and a whole lot of them just look really bad.
Yeah, I, I think the one, I think that's a really good point, you know, as we look at all these things on temporary, but yeah, they, they do have the potential to kind of become the de facto freestanding sign that otherwise isn't allowed. And so, you know, duration, I think, is, is a consideration.
But for certain, I mean, I think they're effective for a period of time.
Well, yeah, and if you have a specific promotional thing, it's a week-long or something and, and you have some reasonable controls, I, I, I like them better than banners stuck out in a.
So maybe, maybe it turns into one or the other, or here's your choices on temporary signs, pick one.
Yeah, so.
Not two or three or five, I don't know.
Right.
And that would have to go with multiple tenants too, as you'd have to have a limited.
Well, it's also a concern, you have a, you know, multiple tenant site and every tenant has an opportunity for one and all of a sudden your frontage has got 23 flags on it. Now what? How effective is that?
How effective?
Not at all.
It's kinda like a used car lot.
Yep, and that's what I think we're trying to avoid.
This, well, actually, there, there could be several items on this one. There's the, the sign that's obviously kind of sitting down low in the, in the planner, but I, it looks like there's flags at the corners of the buildings too, so I didn't know what the.
I was after the freestanding sign in the front, but you do have a variety. You have the freestanding sign, you have the window sign, you have flags up above. The flags look kind of like a design element for the building and that freestanding sign has, it's not like that A-frame on the previous picture, so it seemed like that that was a fairly decent one. It's not in the public right of way.
Is that in our jurisdiction? Is this location in our jurisdiction?
It's the one that's, sits in front of the 24-hour fitness right there on K. They just remodeled the whole thing, it turned out real well.
Well, so.
Yeah, I mean, you, you look at the, the whole thing is a marketing piece.
Yes.
But, you know, including the awnings, I mean, that's. So when a, someone, you know, someone comes in and remodels their facade, do we get involved with that? Do we, the planning department get involved with that?
Yes, we do look at that, we look at rebuilds, we look at, especially now, because as was alluded to earlier, we're looking for that 360 architectural design. But you're also correct, companies have gotten really good at turning the building into the advertising piece, you know, they.
Yeah, good for them.
They know how to do it and quite frankly, if they can do it with minimal signage or just that, why not?
Well, we got a test case coming up, the Carl's Jr. there on 15th and K will be an interesting one to see how they do that, 'cause I'm sure they're gonna do all the latest tricks to it.
The concern is though, you know, where do you draw the line between a nice marketing piece and clutter?
Right.
You know, they've got every, you know, they got the parapet covered, they got the awnings, they got the windows, they got the flags on the four corners, I mean, it's a, it's a.
It's busy.
Heavy-duty marketing piece, that's for sure.
I believe a window sign there too.
And they're not paying attention to the water ordinance.
Uh, yeah, there's a.
Never mind.
Okay, another one of the, the A-frame type things, model homes.
Yeah, I mean, it just seemed like, it was, it's in the planner, but it doesn't address the thoroughfare, addressing a side street, which makes no sense, but name the clutter.
Yeah.
And the next two, the next three are, relate to what you were talking about, the marketing piece, this, this, this particular location, what flavor is this? Is this a Carl's Jr.?
Yes.
I ate biscuits.
Yeah, this, this is the one on 10th Street West and L. And, you know, their signage, they got plenty of signs.
They got plenty of signs, all oriented to the drive-thru, from what I could tell.
Yeah, these, yeah, and then entering the parking lot, going to the drive-thru, you know, stimulate.
Do other cities allow, since these are within the restaurant, drive-through and they're targeted at, do other cities not allow this, this much signage?
What, cities used to quite often limit the menu boards. What, what has kind of happened over the last 20 years is, is a lot of cities kind of softened their stances on the menu boards, you know, because most of the time, they're not oriented to the street, they're oriented to the, you know, the, the drive-thru thing and, but I'm sure what the concern is here that they've not been doing, you start getting all of these other things that are located along there. And of course, the city's attitude was, hey, we gave you the extra menu board area. I'm sure you've probably noticed the newer places now, you get a huge menu board that's kind of a pre-ordering menu board while you're waiting to get to the actual place where you place the order and, you know, they've, they've gotten real clever with things that turn and twist. I mean, it's not breakfast anymore, so these things are now turned over. I've had the misfortune of being in a Burger King drive-thru when, you know, I said, are you serving anything other than breakfast? Oh, yeah, we'll be out in a minute, you know, and then they, they go out and they actually turn the, the board, you know, the other stuff's on the other side, so. But yeah, these, this one's a little bit, but this one in particular, you know, I think the, the thing you should question is, you know, do you really need all of those along there? 'Cause if we're going to the issue of clutter, that looks really cluttered and.
And particularly if you, if you look at the 40, 50% window coverage in the same store, I mean, it's just out of hand.
Yeah, and then on this one, it's, it's migrated to the actual light poles in the center as a whole, so, you know, I mean, one can see them slowly taking over, you know, areas of the lot, so.
Well, they have, actually.
But, and I'll say this again, we can write the ordinance, there's the enforcement issue, but there's also the management of the center, I hate to say. There, there are people who are, would be on this and the manager of the restaurant would, would hear from the owner of the center who would also talk to the parent company.
That's not the case here.
So, you know, they'll, people, well, they're like anybody else, you'll get away with anything you can, you know, until someone tells you to stop.
I remember in my ancient history, the, the pole signs we used to put up on, under canopies when we were marketing different things, in the, what was it? Blue chip stamps and S&amp;H green stamps and.
Oh, yeah.
Hula dollars and, anyway.
Yeah, so the same thing here, this one's actually on the sign that tells you how tall the vehicle can be without hitting the, the canopy, so it's put there. Same, you know, you look once, what is that attached to, actually? Is that another pole, light pole?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, you know, this one, it kind of goes back to that freestanding banner thing. Now, this isn't oriented directly to the street, I don't believe.
It's oriented to the pedestrian walking into the business.
But it's oriented to the parking area plus, you know, you walk by it and you, and you see this, so.
Almost looks like it's tied up with strings too.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
And deteriorated, so is that, I mean, you've got plenty of signage on the building and everywhere else, I mean, do you, is it appropriate to have your, whatever you call it, your menu board hanging out by the front door? I mean, I don't know. Or your special of the day, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Does it matter?
And then you also have this, which, you know, it's on top of the roof.
That's very high-quality, yeah. That's K, I think that's Avenue K on a.
Jack-in-the-box, yeah.
Yeah, they're open late.
Apparently so.
So that, we don't allow that under the current regulations, right?
No, I, I mean, there's a, there's a general prohibition on roof signs and this would qualify as a roof sign, so.
Anybody wanna allow roof signs?
No.
No? You sure? Yeah. Okay, moving on to, these are pennants.
Pennants.
The flags, we already looked at this one.
Well, you looked at this one and we have some other pictures.
Oh, yeah.
There's Papa Jones.
This is, this is actually inside of a shopping center parking lot.
Yes, it's not out on the perimeter.
Right adjacent to the marketer who has a double, has a corner with signs on both parapets, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe there's value to that, some pennant, I don't know.
Well, I took it because it was in the middle of the parking lot. Are we gonna be regulating pennants inside the parking lot or just out there that are visual clutter for the main traffic?
Good question.
Yeah, it is a good question.
'Cause there's more in this, in this parking lot. I don't know if you, yeah, that one's in, that one's not in the right of way, that's another, another one in a shopping center.
Oops.
That's in the same shopping center, inside the shopping center.
Definitely be a time limit on pennants.
Oh, there we have it, yeah. Yeah, this, this one on the side there looks almost like the streamers.
Those are streamers on a light pole, and then the grand reopening.
Part of, oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So all the, all the light standards had streamers like you typically see in a used car lot.
Okay.
Very patriotic.
I see that.
So this, and this one has multiple pennants, both on the street and inside the shopping center.
For a nail, is that a nail salon?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Been there quite a while. Nice signs though, they're relatively new, very bright and sure.
But once again, the question, because this is obviously oriented to someone who's already in the center and traveling.
Well, there's some on the outside too.
Oh, okay.
So it's kind of a combo clutter.
Oh, there's one.
Yeah.
That looks more on the perimeter.
Mm-hmm.
And.
And then there's the height issue as well.
Yes. Yes, size.
This is not a very good picture, but there's probably eight or 10 of these, pennants, flags, whatever.
Yeah, actually several pictures.
Right.
What I'm assuming are the same, same location. They, it's hard to tell if they were designed to attract renters or they have a sort of patriotic theme.
I don't know, it was August and September when those photographs were taken, so I, you know, we're well past the 4th of July, so maybe they're a precursor to Veterans Day.
That's possible.
That's possible. And the ones on the, on the, on 20th Street are very faded because they're on this, you know, they're getting direct sunlight, where the ones on the side street aren't. I, I think it's a, it's a marketing thing to attract potential tenants, I don't know what else it could be.
Yeah, I would agree. And these, well, I'm assuming these sit in a residential zone, so.
But this, yeah, this is in the residential zone, yeah. That's one of the more attractive ones. And they like that? Yeah, I like that a lot. So if you wanna recycle, now, there's another one, there's another, if you wanna do recycling, backup one, that's adjacent to a recycling on-site recycling bin, bins, I should say, whatever you call them, where you turn in your cans and bottles and get money.
Yeah.
Very attractive.
Yeah, we're working on trying to get more publicity out on our city recycling facility. There you go, Jocelyn.
I don't think anybody likes that one a lot.
I didn't hear a great deal of, of sympathy or admiration for it.
But that's what happens with two of them over time.
Yeah. Now, this one, I, it looks, this one looks a little smaller, but maybe I'm, so this one looks a little smaller, but I'm not.
Yeah, there's actually two of them on that particular property, but, yeah, it's not as tall and some of the other one. Big a nail salons though.
Yeah.
Those are, those are apparently a very good marketing.
Very important.
I don't know, I'm sure it is to somebody. I think on this particular location, you have multiple flags. Let's see, a highway between L and M.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, a picture doesn't do it justice, our picture in the, in the report's better.
Definitely looks like there should be some sort of height requirement on those.
Yeah.
That's a, you know, it's a Mexican restaurant, isn't it, saying it's Mexican something?
Yeah. They also have a banner tied, looks like it's tied to the metal tubing, so.
Anyway, you see what happens to them, I mean, they get bent, the wind gets to them. I don't know how you control it though, I mean, how do you, you limit it to time and then if they become unattractive, what do you do?
Yeah.
How do you write that?
How do you write it sensibly?
Yeah, I mean, it's, if it's a legitimate marketing tool, I mean, you know, I don't see why we can't use it, but some of them are pretty sad, that's.
Yeah, they, they tend to just stay there for a while.
Yeah, that one.
Well, those should be for just promotion and very limited time.
Yep, I think in this case, it's to identify the business 'cause they can't afford to.
To post a stamp in that sign.
It's got a, it's got a, that, that one's kind of interesting because it's got a tall freestanding sign.
Yeah.
Actually broken up to, it looks like, give every tenant a, a little space and they're not using it.
Right.
At all, so.
Well, it costs more, Brian.
Yeah.
They're not using it because we're working with the property owner to get that removed.
Okay.
At least to another location and it's also the, it's too tall and it's not the right type of sign.
It's about 1350 block of West Avenue J on the south side of the street.
That's that building they cut in half, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, windows and maybe some other things.
So if this was a used car lot, you could have those.
Yeah, they, they tend to have a little bit more lenient.
But they're clearly not allowed in, under the current regulations, right?
Right, the pennant, the pennants in this location would not be allowed.
So do we wanna consider them as an appropriate signing technique in a retail center?
The time they would be up would be an important thing. The time they would be up would be an important thing. If they were up for a long time, like the Stater Brothers one, they did their polls with their red, white, and blue. Something's different here. But if it stays up after so long, then people, we tend to ignore it, and then it turns into the blight.
Yeah.
I think to generate the promotion that they're trying to generate, that definitely should be, you know, time-wise.
This is, you know, one of the better pictures of window signage, I think.
Yeah, it's, might be a little, slightly more than 25% coverage.
Yes, and, and, well, and it illustrates that comment that was made earlier, that by the time you start getting that, you cannot see effectively into the facility. However, assuming this is the same, is this the Ellen Tenth location?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is no way that anyone who's paying attention could leave this site without knowing exactly what's being sold at that location.
Only thing that's missing is the price. You know, you can buy it, but you just don't know what it costs.
Yeah.
Maybe you do, I don't know.
Well, I don't know. At the Pizza Hut, something costs $10.
Places, so.
Once again, you know, the window signs on the, on the Autozone.
In this particular case, it has reflective window treatment. So you can't see in.
Right.
And the purpose of that, in this particular case, is it's storage. It's, it's where they store the merchandise. I don't know if there was any consideration given to that when, when the tenant relocated or not. But I know in, you can't have reflective windows on commercial buildings, can we?
Um.
Or is it just office buildings?
That's something that I think we're, I don't know in particular zones. The downtown area, the downtown specific plan prohibits reflective type, types of, of window treatments, so. But I, I don't know. We'd have to take a look probably into the design guidelines to see about the commercial. I don't know that there's other restrictions.
This is a well-maintained, well-managed center, I should say, for an older center.
So.
That's another one that has, that's about 99% window coverage on that.
Very well covered.
Yeah.
As is.
No, those are.
That one has the price on it.
It does. And those are, those are, what do you call it, splashed, when they're, when they're painted?
When they're painted, yeah.
Hmm?
Yeah.
I'm, I don't know if, where that fits, if it does.
Well, actually, in terms of, you know, whether window signs are posters, or painted, or whatever, we tend to review them all the same. Don't see as much window painting now as, as you used to see, you know. I mean, that used to be much more common, I think. Carl's Jr. again.
Oh, my.
Along with its sign on the side there.
It has a price, too.
It does. Two for five. Whatever the, it is, I'm not sure what they're marketing, but.
Bacon.
Bacon something, huh? I, I, I don't know. But we're getting a new, we're getting a new Carl's Jr., right?
Yes, they're building.
Well, it's already gone through the process?
Yes. Okay. This one, whoever took it will have to talk to us about this one. Really?
That's down in San Diego, across, on the island there.
Galbo. Uh, Galbo, Coronado?
Coronado.
Oh, yeah. I thought it was an interesting sign because it can be moved from place to place, and then on my way here tonight, they have a little pickup truck sitting across, over on 10th West, and it has the businesses thing, and then today, you had the hood open on the pickup truck and a sign stuck under the hood. So I, I think that those, that is mobile signs, and the bike's perfectly usable. You can ride it wherever you want to park it. And it does say you can get a Brazilian bikini wax.
You can get what?
I think that's what it says, Brazilian bikini wax.
We don't regulate content, do we?
Oh, really?
In the area where it was at, I'm sure they have all kinds of sign ordinance, and that one somehow manages to survive.
It's a great way to end the sign discussion. Well, we're not done yet, are we?
Uh, we're close.
Well, how do, you know, the mobile signs is a big deal.
Yeah.
Between the bail bonds and the, and the whatever else.
Wrapped vehicles that are parked. Mobile signs could also be your twirlers.
How do we regulate those, or do we even try?
Uh.
Or do we care?
I don't know that we've ever tried to, tried to deal with that. You know, the people signs, if you will.
The twirlers are annoying and distracting and aggravating, and you get into really, really touchy First Amendment issues if you try to prevent them, prohibit them, make them get a license. You get into prior restraint issues. It's just, it's a nightmare. So I know we don't like them, but I, I would caution you careful if you want to get into that area.
They'll find out if they have medical care and are being paid payroll check instead of cash under the table.
And bikini wax.
That's a perk of the job.
Okay.
It's getting late.
Miscellaneous signs.
I've been here since three.
The, the, now no longer there Carl's Jr., former Carl's Jr. building.
I just took that for posterity so we'd remember it.
Okay.
Yep.
This one, um, which I'm not quite sure what we were looking at, but.
Well, that's a, that's a permitted sign.
Yes.
That was permitted with the center, right?
Yes.
I just question the effectiveness of it when the buildings are signed and clearly visible, and then you have this monument 18, 22 feet in the air, which tend to block the visibility of the building.
But what's that wood sign next to the monument sign?
That's a for lease sign. There's a couple of those on the site.
Yeah, the, the, the multi-tenanted types of freestanding signs, it's an interesting discussion. I've talked to center owners, I've talked to sign people about this, and I said, people don't see these. You know, they're, they're, especially on streets where they're flying by at 50 miles an hour, they don't, it doesn't register. The sign people know that, but the leasing agents in particular say they can charge more lease rate if, if they can say, hey, you know, you're signed out on the major street.
Right.
Now, if speeds on these streets were 30, 25, probably be a big difference, but they're flying by at such a high rate of speed. Everyone sort of agrees that nobody sees these signs, but they charge you more if you have one, and sign companies are quite willing to, to build them, so.
On the other, on the other hand, what was the name of that community you mentioned previously?
Uh, Fontana, Chukumanga.
That had Walnut, no. Was it the W? Sorry, I should have written it down. But at any rate, you were comparing the quality of signage regular.
Oh, Lake Forest.
Forest. Well, we could, you know, we could go to the other extreme, like Thousand Oaks, where they don't allow any monument signs whatsoever for anybody, period.
Yeah.
And you can't find your way around anywhere. You don't know where anything is if you're not from there. So that's the other extreme.
And then I think we've seen this one before, which was.
Oh, my goodness.
Sign. And there you go.
That was a lot of fun. Now what do we do?
Well, I, we'll take the, the comments, and we'll start crafting some parameters, some parameters for, you know, an ordinance, and start kind of defining what the boundaries of that should be.
Like to our bikini wax boundaries. Brazilian bikini wax. Thanks for.
Is there a difference? Oh, God, that was a leading question.
Oh, I didn't know it was a difference.
It's late, all right? We're not used to standing up to say.
Staff did discuss what the purpose of that picture was.
You know, apparently we found out clearly.
In retrospect, we should have just taken it out.
Yeah.
It was an interesting sign.
You know, you, you, you brought a level of interest to the discussion tonight that I hadn't foreseen.
I think there'd be a market for it, mobile signs, that is.
All right. So do we agree that the flag pennant is an appropriate temporary allowed, potentially temporarily allowed signage in the community for retailers?
I, I think that as long as it fits in that one guideline that was written in there, a certain times, numbers of times per year, duration of days per occurrence, things like that would work out real well for pennants.
Hmm?
Well, then that gets into some pretty good detail. How tall are they normally? 10 feet tall, 12 feet tall, 20 feet tall?
I think you can get them any size you want.
We can, we can do a little bit of research and see if there's parameters out of other cities for those.
But meanwhile, no matter what these temporary signage, current regulations or potential future regulations we might review and recommend to the city council, they all require permits. All signs require permits of some kind. Right? Or they are permitted by regulation without oversight. Would that be a fair statement? Well, that, you know, real estate signs are permitted by regulation, but they're, they're permitted, but they're not regulated, I should say. Copy's not regulated, but size is. But no, but you don't need to come in and get a permit to put up a real estate sign, whether it be for lease or for sale or whatever, right? We've got those categories, and then we have temporary sign categories, and then we have permanent sign category. All we're looking at is the temporary promotional signs, right? That's our focus.
Yes, that, that's the task you were handed.
Okay. And the current regulations require permit?
They require, um.
Some form of oversight.
Right.
So it's likely that you'll come back with a recommendation of some form of oversight.
Yes, because practically everything that you've mentioned, size, height, spacing, you know, if, if you want to look at that issue, it requires a.
All right. Anything further on signs? Director's announcements.
Uh, the only announcement, Mr. Chairman, under your commission agenda, we're asking you to look at setting meeting dates for January, February, given the holidays.
Did you check the, the calendar to determine that a week later would be, the room would be available on the 26th of January and the 23rd of February?
Both dates are available.
Okay.
So what day in December?
Pardon?
What, what day in December were we going to do it, or is it just?
No, we're talking about the, the rescheduling of the, of the planning commission in January and February.
Okay.
Be a week later if, if, if that's your pleasure. And that's historically what we've done. Yeah, 26th of January and 23rd of February. I think that's correct, isn't it, Joy? Isn't that what we?
Correct, yes.
All right, very good.
You'll send that out, Joy?
Do we need, do we need to, to adopt a motion on that?
The attorney says better to do that.
You're really tough on us tonight.
What were the dates again?
Reschedule the planning commission meeting to January 26th and February 23rd due to the Martin Luther King Jr. Day and President's Day holidays, respectively.
So moved. Take it.
If, if you can please do a verbal vote.
Verbal vote?
Yes.
Home in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Six zero. We have no public here to address this unless somebody's hiding out in the lobby and want us to come charging in. I don't see anyone. All right, then. Anything further from the members?
We have an update on the LED commission.
Ah, go ahead.
We've had more than one meeting now, and it started off with the presentation from the full committee, commission of changing and requiring LEDs on new construction. It has since completely changed and has turned into a Build It Better program. Build It Better program was a series of incentives that the city would offer the Better Built Program developers, and they would then have several different things. It comes in this paper here, where a developer has to install water sense fixtures, or gray water systems, or subsurface irrigation. And we had recently mandated solar. They're also getting points for more solar per house. It seemed like a really good idea because that the incentive thing is better than, like they say, better than a, it's better to use a carrot than a stick to try to get the developers to move forward, and we really needed to kind of lead the way, because we have been leading the way on energy efficiency, and this is one way to do it. Today, though, was some interesting stuff that popped up, and Tom DePrima from KB Homes brought it up. He says we're selling 22 used homes per one new home, and he offered some really insightful suggestions, and one of them was his house code updates. Another one would be making sure the insulation in the attic was proper. Another one was sealing the ducts. You could have a tester come in and do duct testing, and then he would certify that the ducts were sealed properly. There were a lot of talks about return on investment, whether or not it would actually work out for people to do it. It's kind of a work in progress, kind of like the sign ordinance right now, we're waiting for them to come up with some other ideas, and Tom to talk with Heather and Robert to give us some more stuff. But we expect next month's meeting to have a nice presentation where they want to do it in gender review, and have a gender review in the other room down the way. What's that called? The emergency?
The emergency parking recreation room.
Are you getting participation from trade organizations in that, in this group?
Martin was there from the building.
VIA.
VIA. And we had a guy from Nexus Water, Graywater, his name was Bob. And he's excited about us having these types of things come online because they want to do manufacturing. They talked about having the house for a beginning gray water recycling where you would just put the plumbing in and then your gray water thing would go down and fly into the sewer and your, eventually when you want to put in the full system, you could just cut that out and then recycle it back into the house for flushing the toilet with gray water or irrigating your yard with it.
I may interject. What was exciting about these meetings, our city, our city staff is brilliant. You know, we were dealing with an issue that looked like was going to be a mandate. Now, no longer a mandate, it's now an incentive. Led from LED lighting, you know, trying to reduce the carbon footprint to now, it's leading down a path where, you know, other issues are coming into play, such as, you know, reclaimed water, you know, for irrigation and stuff. So we've met with, well, today's meeting, the BIA, Tom DePrima from KB Home, the representative from Nexus Water, you know, and, and city staff, so. Getting away from a mandate and going to an incentive, the project being called Build, you know, Better Built Home Program. Now the builders have incentive to offer these upgrades as opposed to being told they have to. You know, the mandate they do these upgrades is just kind of taking us down a little, little bit different approach.
Well, we start with a baby step, the incentive program to start with, and then, of course, mandates are going to have to happen later because of the global warming gas, AB thirty-two that the state signed into effect, going to have such constraints on what we can admit and what we can't admit that we're going to have to make some sort of mandate eventually. But they, staff that we talked to today really feels that the best step is to start, okay, we're going to do incentives. We don't want to irritate our developers and add tons of cost to projects that are already going to be fairly expensive. So it's probably a precursor to mandates later on down the road.
So we started out with mandating LED lighting for all new development, and it's turned into an incentivization for residential development.
And actually, used home certification. And I kept trying to point staff back. I said, do you want us to really move off LED? And yes, we do. They really want.
And it took it away from LED. You know, now we're working on water conservation, energy conservation, and environmental impact. So, you know.
So I asked the question about trade associations. The only trade association that's been involved is the BIA, which represents residential single-family home developers.
We have not talked to any commercial.
Well, you're not, you're not talking about doing any, any impacts on commercials to start with, huh?
Not yet.
Wonder about the trade association you and I belong to, have you?
Yeah, that may be a good topic for discussion.
I would think they'd want to weigh in on that.
General membership meeting.
Yeah. As well as, you know, some of the other trades that typically get involved with the development, the building of these facilities. The plumbers and electricians and the roofers and the insulators and on and on and on.
Oh, it's endless.
You know.
But, but, you know, the cool thing is, instead of mandating, we're offering an incentive program.
Yeah, I hear you, but, but if, you're only getting it from one source, it sounds like to me.
So we might not have enough incentives on our sheet. Because the sheet keeps growing every time I see it. Got new stuff on it.
Yeah, to answer your question, Jim, you're, you're absolutely correct. We're, you know, just vetting this out now, bringing it to the.
It may, it may take longer than October to finish the task, huh?
Yes. Well, that's what I asked him today, and he says, oh, no problem. But I, I just knew it'd take a little longer than October.
Yeah, I would think, yeah. That'll do it right.
They're very optimistic.
Well, that's good. You guys are doing great work. Thank you for being involved.
We have a large list of expenses that we need to submit.
I understand that, yeah. We have, we have a great expense account in this commission. I think it's zero, isn't it? Something like that? If that, yeah. It's a minus zero. So be sure you turn in your expenses and, and they'll be duly processed.
Yes.
To the nearest, to the nearest file, yeah. All right, then. Anything further from anyone? Thank you all for hanging in there this late tonight. So the meeting is adjourned to our special meeting for agenda review on Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at five-thirty PM in the Public Safety Conference Room here at City Hall. What's that?
Given the information on the presentation, the Parks Recreation and Arts Conference Room. It's downstairs.
Parks Recreation and?
And Arts.
It's a bigger room, huh?
Yes, it is.
Great. Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.